Put it out there. In my opinion on something like this, you're going to get what you pay. That's my opinion.
What I wanted to do.
Either the other way we'll be doing it last month.
Yeah.
And then add up to experience that type of something.
We seem like there's too many underlying things on the other way.
Right now it's fifty thousand dollars a month or so. You know, you did it out there so. Nine times if you want. It doesn't matter how much they're getting.
Yeah.
Figured out it too. So you're going to build Joe, not one too. We already agreed to that.
And this is not part of the soft costs. It is part of the soft cost. So we've got a few months for the council to decide. For the money. We've got like one, one point one million dollars.
I think one point five. Or even more than that maybe, I don't know, I'm sure. But I do know it's at least one point five.
I'm thinking it's north of there.
Soft costs, this place is somewhere across three million dollars. And the same with bigger numbers of two that go in, the decapitated centers. And with the just checks by five, they're fine.
Well, I think we should go ahead and continue with the contracts we have, so nobody can pay for it.
It's not good, it's all good.
Because of that, we're just. I know you don't like the term, we're just kicking it down the line further and further.
If you get along, you're going to know.
Yeah. Twelve years, twelve months.
We talked about one time, it was two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Big number.
I don't want in any way to be uncooperative with the council. I feel like it's fine for us to. To move. So you have a motion, you have a second. You ready? Assuming because of that, you're ready to make a call for a vote.
Because I thought we were just going to delay everything a little longer and we're doing it.
Okay, then I would call for a vote on the motion. It is to engage Mr. Jack Kraus and what's in the construction control incorporated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
That's the end of my.
So, Lawrence, back to you.
No, that is the end of, the end of what I have, I appreciate the time. Very worthwhile.
We appreciate your time too, and that's why we're paying you a lot of money, take your time, so.
But again, any meeting that we have, you guys. We find this will have you scheduled.
When Greg runs the meetings with the sheriff, and you guys are invited to them, we will want to come back in here at certain prescriptive times, or what, to kind of decide that together, to do some public meetings, some public presentations, so everybody, everybody in the community knows what we're doing.
Sure.
So we're not trying, we're not, we don't want to design this in the secret, but we can't have hundreds of people in a meeting and try to get anything done, so. Okay. We'll be back as many times as you guys want us to be to present to the public and let them know what's going on.
Well, we want to have the public well informed of it, yeah, I'm sure that Colin's going to do a big job of recording on this meeting and on other meetings, but.
Yep.
We want to make sure that we have enough meetings so they have the material that they can actually tell the people what's going on exactly. Of course, people are invited to come to all these, but if we're, everybody's going to be in the open.
Yep.
Mr. Blue, you have.
Sorry, just to, just to further be. I'm sorry for not apologizing for meeting.
Fine.
So, the, I don't get occasioned to interact with the Albona folks much, but the, it was presented at one time recently that they would provide us with a fixed amount for architectural services. Since that time, I received a copy of the contract that they entered into Fulton County, which they charged them four and a half percent if they use the Adams County prototype, and they charged us six and a half percent, which is roughly three hundred thousand dollars on this job. And I was hoping that we could have that conversation about what that fixed number would be in short order, if at all possible.
A very good idea. You ever try?
Yeah, I do. They selected the Adams County as a prototype, and exactly, and that's exactly the building they're getting. Where the design work is much more limited than what we're going through here. You've got a smaller building, it's, you know, it's a little bit taking smarter to do a smaller building in terms of the numbers. So, nice try, but I'm not going to negotiate a fixed number. We've been through this before, and I'll be happy to talk about it any time you want, but I can't do this project for a nine percent fee.
So you have two counties that are doing exactly the same jail, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, Adams County, Fulton County wants Adams County. They said, pick that up and put it on our site, but we won't. And when we do that, we give them some choices about what they can get, what they can change. And they changed a few things, but, you know, we're limited about time, effort, and cost that we have in the project. We're not doing that here, we started a clean piece of paper. And.
Really?
That just is what it is. I mean, if you wanted, if you, if you had a county that was big enough that you could tolerate a two-hundred-bed facility or a hundred-and-eighty-nine-bed facility, which is what Adams County, County is, I'd make the same offer to you, but we don't.
How big is Fulton County?
How big is Fulton County? Pardon?
The jail, I mean, Fulton County. Two hundred meter thing. Is their final product?
Is their final price?
Their final product is two hundred meter?
I think that's right.
Yeah, I have looked at it the last week.
Yeah, it was, it was right at two hundred yards. It's exactly the floor plan. Is not any different.
So, you know, I think that's interesting, because Fulton County and, to my knowledge.
It's the same size.
Fulton County and here are about the same size.
I know, and I, and I, we've had conversations with them, and they are, they're planning down the road. They wanted two-hundred-bed jail one. I know, it's not, it's not, I'm not spending the money, I'm just designing the buildings. So they pick the building that they want, and I can make them a special offer on it because I can. I can't do that, I don't have that kind of deal, I can't make it.
What kind of a cost do they?
Pardon?
What kind of a cost is it for their, for their jail?
Their jail's going to be eighteen million plus.
How many?
Eighteen and a half.
Eighteen plus?
Construction cost. Will probably be eighteen and a half.
Total budget will probably be twenty-five, yeah?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
So Fulton wants Adams County?
Pardon?
I'm trying to figure out what it is.
Now, you know.
That's very rare, very rare. And all my time, I've never been to the other place. Very unusual. And that's why Mike can afford to be there.
Because he's got all the paperwork done, all you got to do is just board and do utilities.
I've got, I've got two jails that are going right now that are exactly Adams County. One is DeCader County, southern Indiana. And, and we did that one for four and a half, four and a quarter percent. You know, because I can't, I'm not in this to just like rip as much money out of the system as I possibly can to put in my pocket, you know, I want to do the right thing. And when somebody says, I want that, and I can do it for less, you know, I'm not in this to make huge amounts of money.
Okay, how about it, how about if we get this all done, and somebody else says, hey, we want Carroll County's jail, we get cut back out of it.
That may happen, that may happen, I don't know, I, you know, I, the modeling that we have the ability to do today gives us the opportunity to afford people into the future, where, I don't know what the future market's going to be. I'm working on one right now that is, actually, I'm just starting a study on it. It's in South Dakota, Deadwood, county down.
Deadwood?
Deadwood, and, and my sense is, they may, they may end up with the jail, it's just exactly like yours.
Now, there's a jail that just, they might have breaking rocks in Deadwood.
They might. Been to Deadwood several times, and they just might. So, you know, I, I can't, I, the, the market conditions that we are in today are very much different than they were twenty years ago. So. If I can sell the Carroll County jail again, I may just come back to you. I don't know, you know. I might, I might get somebody like Joshua, won't let me get any, any fee anyway, so. It is what it is. So, just, just so that you understand, the project, we're doing the project in Cass County also, you know, we're putting a big addition on that, that jail, that's a, that's a renovation, and that's a six and a half percent fee also. Because it's a hard, it's not, it's not a cookie cutter, it could not be. And, so, you know, the, the fee that we quoted on your project is very fair. It's a very fair kind of, kind of issue, opposing to what some people think it is.
I think it's interesting that a county we went, same thing, went through it, looked at it, said, this is cool, this is what we want, and just bought the same.
Happened more than once, and it's, and I, look, I'm an architect, I redesign, we start with a clean piece of paper every day, but if somebody wants something that they're already done, why am I saying, no, I can't do that because they own it, you know, I'm not doing that. Actually, we own all of the designs, and we do, so, you know, I'm in the business of doing the right thing for people.
There was a company, an architectural company out of Fulton that years ago, back in the early fifties through mid-fifties, designed gymnasiums for schools.
Oh, yeah.
And I have, the school that I went to at high school built a new gym from them, and I know that there's one exactly like it. That was North Webster, there's one exactly like it in Lorwell, there's one down in Thorntown, there's one at Dayton. If I start thinking, I can come up with a lot of these, Camden, Camden has exactly the same gym in Fort Wayne. Huh?
It wasn't, no.
One in Fort Wayne, am I wrong on that?
Probably, yeah, everybody brown, they're Indian apples. They just, they just stamped them out.
Okay.
All metric, all over Indiana, they're saying, things are brick color, things are colored inside. Everybody thinks they have a new building.
Yeah.
It was a very functional gym that they, that they built. All the stuff is still in use.
I don't know that they were giving anybody a break on the second, third, fourth, and tenth. So.
Okay, I need to get this contract signed here on draft, and are we?
Unless you have anything else to bring up.
Is there any, that he has anything else to bring up, see? Thank you very much. I'm going to set this aside. Paul is not here with his update for road improvement. I don't know how much you gentlemen have been.
I would say.
But to look at the roads, the boy, this is one that we've now put down some, on Dayton Road out through here. Nice road. It's just smooth as can be, beautiful. I'm really happy that we've gone down to this, this year, all of the roads. Because, not because Paul's not here, because we had to follow an agenda, of course, we want to go over, but I have a request. I think I need to, I think I have a request for you two, I think I need to have our attorney here on the control. Let's go to Mike.
Yes. I have something for Highway.
I would love to hear it.
Okay, thank you. Someone called the comment and wanted to know when the county commissioners approved closing Carrollton Road. Carrollton Road's closed.
It's closed right now?
It's a tragedy.
No, it's closed, it's closed.
Too close?
City of Delphine.
Is that one going outside of town or something?
That's true.
Yeah. Well, they closed it outside of the city of Delphine, they closed?
Isn't it, Mike, outside of city limits?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe so. I haven't been out that way to check it, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's outside the city limits.
Are they doing the water work out there?
Yes.
So they probably got it shut down for safety purposes?
It was shut down last week, and it's supposed to be open, I froze early as today, I have not been out there today, but.
Were you notified that the road was closed for?
The mayor did drop off a people claim to us that we posted for deputies.
So the commissioners did not approve that?
And the county highway, we've called county highway, because we've received complaints and dispatch, and county highway had no part of it, and have directed all the officers to the city.
I have not had the opportunity to drive Carroll Road going north for a few weeks. Thank you for bringing that up, Chris.
I'll be, I'll be going to the Board of Works meeting this evening, and I'll ask about that. I mean, I knew that it was happening, and it never occurred to me, that's a county road, you know, because we're all caught up in the water thing. But in, if it's, and I'll go out and look before I, you know.
Okay, Mike, please.
Sir, the reason why I got, I asked to get put on the schedule for the courthouse security committee again was, September sixth, Glassack County shut down their courthouse for suspicious devices.
For what?
A suspicious device was found in their courthouse. So, you know, I kind of want to get it known.
I have talked to the.
You what?
I'm just teasing, just don't encourage anybody, please.
No, I'm not encouraging, I, you know, we've been picking up the scan for a while.
Well, I'm a good scan getter.
I didn't say that, sir.
We. I have talked to the judge, and their, the response they got is one of us will do it. I don't know which one.
I, I got a phone call from Karen, their court reporter, and they said they both would like to do it, but if you only need one name, it would be Judge Dean.
Supposedly, we're in a court, no, we're not.
It's more than, right, bigger cases.
Do we need both of them on it? It would be hard to have their, their input of both on.
I mean, I think maybe for the initial meeting, we should have both of them on there, that way you get both of the judges' opinions, and then we can break it down back to the fore that I talked about. We need to keep it small, and then we can, as we continue the meetings going through, we can call in the different people.
Of course, the judges are a vital part of the secure situation.
Well, the judge, it's important to know what they, you know, did. We've gone through this in the open meetings before with Ted about how big, how much court security you need. You asked me if I liked, if we liked the place down completely, how much would we need? Well, you'd have more courthouse security personnel, and you'd have a road there, because that makes no sense. So, get with the judges, find out what they want, and then pull that group back down to that court, you know, that executive group back down between one of the commissioners, the sheriff, the judge, and myself. And then we can start working on it.
Okay, so, so what, what are you suggesting we use as our next step?
Our next step is to get the sheriff and myself, I think we volunteered to be on it, and the two judges together, and see where they see it going, and how much security they want.
Would you mind setting that meeting up?
I can do that.
I am unavailable this week on this year's project.
There's kept, there's one that I'll be.
I'll find out when they're dead.
Yeah.
They do these after four o'clock.
Huh?
After four. Isn't it good, I mean, that's the time.
I can work it out after four.
I will give it to judges and find out on that.
Okay.
Also, it's not on the schedule, but laugh on what they will say. All the commissioners on the tenth of September received a email from a Stephanie Yager from the Indiana Association of Towners.
Surveyor?
That survey. I just take that survey.
I did it.
Okay. It was sent to your commissioner email address. That survey was actually sent out by the Director Langley, who originally backed it beginning of the year. Who was the homeless security director for the state of Indiana. They didn't get much of a response, so he sent it to the IACC over there. So if you guys, please take that.
Well, I can look back here and see, right, mine.
Actually, I think it came out on my first.
It seems like about half of the doctoral students that are due have a survey they want us to fill out.
Well, this actually came from the IACC.
Yeah, I know, but I just, I tend to, I tend to, when I see surveys, right over them and keep going.
Okay. Well, it deals with.
I will look for it.
Mine came on my personal, you know, that's the one we had, so I broke my golden rule and took it on my personal.
Sorry.
I should have came on your commission. Because I thought it was a hoax, so I picked him, who was on the weekend.
If you don't have it, I will forward it to our commissioners.
Evidently, something you see is valuable for us to.
It's important.
It helps. Love to know what our.
Anything for me?
Can you give us an update on that?
The spill?
Yeah, the spill, please.
Okay, so Saturday morning, got a call about seven forty-five that there was a manure spill between two and three hundred north on Meridian Road. I'm going to guess it's about two to three hundred gallons, and from what I can tell, it was intentionally done.
Intentionally done?
Yeah. And the reason why I say it's intentionally, and it's in the email that I sent you, there's no drops down the road. You know, so if there's a leaky load or the stuff lead up to it, this is middle of the road.
So, it's under right on the road, isn't it? Doesn't that start out?
No, no, it's in between some field, I mean, there's Robins, Robinson Fields on one side, and I think, and I think I can barely, there's something on the left side. I D M's been notified, state watch desk was notified, gave us some remediation.
You know who it is?
Um, we're doing some stuff, just trying to figure out who it is.
It's an ongoing investigation. Ongoing investigation.
There's some, there's some ways that you can test the manure. That I found out that you can test the genetics based off feeding that, and we can probably get it back to the area. So, I'm not doing it, the Carroll County Ag Association is actually working that part through.
Well, I hope that it was done intentionally, that you was finding.
Right now, there's not a county ordinance on that.
Wait a minute, what did you just say?
I don't think there's a county ordinance on that. I'd have to, I'd have to do a state, I'd have to refer back to the state ordinance, and I could go based off of the state response.
How many gallons do you, uh?
Am I guessing?
Estimate, a hundred and up?
Two to three hundred. Two to three hundred. Because on the east side of the road, it went about ten rows back. And that, and I was out there for a few hours.
Was there any open files or anything there, or written?
About fifty yards down, there's a drainage tile that I did some remediation to keep it from getting into, along with about sixty bags of, of, of cobble absorbent. One was some scraping, that rain, that absorbent really kept it in place, and with the heat of Saturday, kind of kept it from moving, so I was out there yesterday making sure it didn't move.
Now, I have a question about that, is we're concerned about it getting into that drainage tile?
Yes.
And yet we spread it all over fields that have drainage tiles that run right out of the field anyway.
If you knife it into the field.
Yeah, but they don't.
Some fields do.
A lot of them do.
A lot of them don't. If you do it directly, and that.
A lot of them just got like a big spread.
Right, and there's direct lay, and, and you got to read the whole thing with the chemist's office, and you can't be so far within certain, so many feet of a tile. You can't, and so many feet of sewage, and so many feet of subject tanks, and that, and then I'm not sure if that's my job, or if that's the health department's available, I'm not sure who's laying that to. To enforce that.
Mike, Mark?
They actually shouldn't start spreading until they get to the field, right, not on the road.
Right, I, yes, but it's also, the state's chemist's office is the one that sets the regulation, I D M just controls it. But within county, you know, like other counties, there's an environmental officer within a lot of counties that control that investigates those types of incidents. I'm not sure in this county it is, if it's my job, or if it's health department's job.
I think we should identify that. Who's job, whose job it is, because.
By default, a lot of people are calling me, I'm not going to turn down a phone.
Sure, I appreciate that.
We had the resources, I don't think our health department's got a big spill thing like that.
I don't have a big spill thing either.
They didn't, you had to go get it all?
Well, I mean, I, I could call in tip, the new county is going to cost us to take a little more money. I've got absorbent and stuff like that, but.
Well, we recently had a situation where that they were applying it to a field out south in Cutler, and, I mean, really applied it to a field, and not only applied it to the field, they applied it to the neighbor's backyard and everywhere down through there, and it, I D M came out, and I don't know what all action they took with the health department called I D M, but the longer effect of it is, those people are very serious, it's a brand-new house, it was built less than two years ago. And they are, they've contacted a realtor, and they're pretty well sure they're going to sell because they can't stand to live there, you know. I mean, it was unbelievable, the stench, and they have had flies so thick, they have really nice screen back, flies so thick, you couldn't see through the screen. And the town of Cutler, which is a mile north, is having fly problems unbelievable right now, because, I mean, flies, you know, they're the kind of land on you, you shoe them, and they land here, and then they land here, and they just, they won't go away, they just, and it's just everywhere in there, and I'm, we haven't had this before, this manure thing, so.
Well, I think we're supposed to turn it over if they land on top.
They didn't turn it over, they just spread it out there and let it lay there.
I'll have to go back and read, there's, there's different lane applications that you can do. You can knife it in, there is direct lay, but there's distances that you have to be from, and I found out about out there in Cutler, about three weeks, four weeks after it was done. On that one, I D M was correct, and besides it hitting the person's yard, there wasn't a whole lot that you could do because it's six, I think it was sixty-two feet from a personal well or subject. And I D M measured it, and it was within the distance. The fact that it landed on the person's tees and it were on their land, you know, that's an issue.
I find it always interesting, and whenever I D M comes out, they're always unable to do anything about it because.
If it, but if it's written in the state, if it's written within the, if it's within the regs, you know. Now, Camden County, and I'd have to defer, Camden County do a setback on how far you can apply them to your fields? I don't. I mean, we got, we got setbacks on how far a KFO could be from houses, we got. I mean, we got, we got setbacks on how far a KFO could be from houses. We got setbacks for this and we got setbacks for that.
It means nothing. I mean, truly, it does, it does a setback, but my house is over a mile from the plug producer that did the stream. My yard on most nights, nice, beautiful night here in the summertime, has all the ambiance and bouquet of a Kentucky State Park outhouse. It's just not that pleasant to be there and it's over a mile from me. So.
Well, I'll have those issues depend on the operator.
That's right.
We're getting tired, somehow tired of those, I say tired of them, but make them more responsive.
Maybe it's time for the commissioners or somebody to visit with the Carroll County Ag Association people. I, I don't know where to go with it.
Just a good operation, obviously.
There are. The majority of the operators, the majority of the operators are very environmentally conscious. You know, if we can find out who did this spill, you know.
I hope you do.
We'll deal with it. I'm sure the Ag Association will deal with it as well. You know, this isn't the only spill this year. We had the big one on five hundred south earlier this year that went about a hundred yards down the road. Nobody called it in for about four days after it happened and multiple rains that washed from the area of it off. Some of it, I would say, is business with others, you know. This one was, I would say, was intentional.
Well, appreciate you looking into it. Please continue looking into it. You need to know. You don't need to feel trapped here. Thank you. We are going to other commissioners' actions and before I step to that, we have a request here from Ross Brown. If you take the- Okay, go ahead, Ross.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Ross Brown. I own-
My son, by the way.
I own the Cutler General School in Cutler, Indiana. I'll do a block and stuff there. And I have purchased the building next to me also, so I have the north half of the downtown block. The commercial area in Cutler is one block long, so the north half there. Don Roberson had- Don Roberson used to own this, the building next to me that I purchased just almost a year ago. And he had twice a month at a music festival on the patio that were between the buildings. So that was something I was always kinda wanting to do and I had a veterans group come to me about a month ago, maybe a little longer. Wanting to do a music festival there as a benefit for their veterans group. And so I thought this is a wonderful thing, wonderful thing. It's the community, it's the community, all that stuff. So we're having a music festival October fifth between the buildings and the patio area. Now, the main thing I'm concerned about is I don't know if I'm gonna have a hundred people attending, a thousand people attending, or ten thousand people attending. I have no idea. So my concern is parking in town, everybody's yard getting parked up, all that kind of stuff. I'm also concerned about the fire department and the other side of the street. So you have the fire department, you have Don Roberson, second, have a storage building there, and then you have the post office. The post office closes at noon. We're not gonna start until afternoon. So it'll be two to seven is what we're advertising, so I'm assuming it'll be about noon to eight when there's really going to be there doing stuff. So what I am asking for is to actually be able to close that one block of the roadway for parking, special for veterans parking. But also then, I have several motorcycle groups that have come through that are supporting the veteran group, one of which was a Sonic motorcycles. And I don't know all their names, but anyway, they came through earlier last month and just as a see where it's gonna be kinda thing. And the whole town is full of motorcycles, so. And I don't wanna have motorcycles where they're falling over and we got problems with that, so I like to park them right there in the middle of that one block street. And I also like to park any veterans or any handicapped or like that right there in the street, right in front of the event. So I am asking to close that for those few hours on a Monday, October fifth.
Is the fire department in that section?
It is in that section. I have talked to the township trustee, Dean Gammer. He has no problem with it. I have not yet gotten ahold of, I didn't, I don't know personally, the fire chief, okay? I have not talked to him personally yet. I have gotten messages back and forth with him a little bit, but the fire department personally, I've not. It, what I, I guess I'm proposing is if they have any trouble with getting the trucks out for that time period, then I would, and what they normally do is when they have an event going on, is they'll take the trucks and they'll park them two blocks down the street at the church for that time period and then they'll bring them back. I'm thinking that there'll be enough people in town, enough traffic in town, that they're gonna have trouble if they have a flyer getting out unless they do move. Now, of course, they're concerned with, well, who's gonna go and get the trucks? Who's gonna bring them back? How late's it gonna be? Or, you know, and it's a month out, so nobody knows what they are doing a month out. So I guess what I'm proposing is that block closes off, but if, if the fire department, when it comes right down to the time, says, no, we don't have anybody to run the fire trucks out, we'll just start from the fire, fire department over with the bush.
I would enforce that, though. How would you enforce that, Ross? Keep them from parking over there if we don't?
That's my concern the whole time. I don't know how to keep people that are not from the community from parking right in front of the fire department. Because what I've found, and I, I go over there all the time, people are coming into my store, they'll park over there. Listen, I got parking spaces all open right in front of my store. They'll park over there, you know, walking across. It's just, but it's people that are from outside the community and it's, there's people that come into a small community and they assume that it's all closed, that this is, you know, that this isn't in operation, fire department. Okay, so like I explained to them, hey, this is fire department, you gotta get out of there now. I'm gonna have trouble doing that for this festival because I'm gonna have a lot of other things going on. And I'm gonna run the, along with my dad, run the snack bar in the back of the property. So if, if, I'm really concerned as to who I'm going to select to be parking warden out there. And I think it'd be a lot easier for everybody if I just close off that section and say, park here. And, but if, if that's a problem, then we just put the barricades just past the fire department. Fire department's right on the corner. They've got two trucks that are going on Hudson Street and then they have two that go on Main Street or forty-five south. And those forty-five south ones or Main Street, one of them are right across from my store, right across basically from the venue. But I think, you know, we can put barricades before. I can try to keep people from parking in that. But that's, I think that's more of a local, you know, me and the fire department have the work out there.
I think they need to get a hold of the fire chief and maybe set up some kind of a deal where he can run a fifty-fifty at your event. And maybe have his people come in and volunteers to do the parking and they get part of the fifty-fifty, you know, maybe split it with you guys. Fifty-fifty, like if you pay the dollar for a traffic ticket?
Yeah.
Since you can do that and some of the proceeds can go to that fire department?
I'm, I'm all-
And also hire the reserve deputies. They can do that too for the Carroll County.
Okay.
To help with that.
Okay, that's, that's a really good idea. I had not quite gotten that far on my thinking, I guess. This is my first time doing this kind of thing. I mean, I've gone to a lot of shows.
If you can bring me a letter and the fire chief says it's okay to close that road, I'd be willing to sign that paper because that'd be my biggest concern as to what's the emergency services need out.
Right, yeah.
And when, when's your event?
October fifth.
October fifth.
So I'm running kind of behind right here. This is the last, the final meeting before then, I think.
I think if you can get me a letter saying that, I'll sign up today or tomorrow or whatever.
If, if, if the board here decides to do it, we need to, we need to say pending-
Pending, right.
Fire department approval, fire chief approval.
I think you could probably work something out with a good relationship with the fire department. With that many people there, I'm sure they can run some.
Well, the other, the other situation with that is they have their annual Hammond Bean supper the weekend before, okay? And I had, I did not select this date. It was not the date I wanted it to be. I am completely covered up from business through the fall here with doing shows. And, but that was the date they wanted and I'm not charging them a dime to do this thing. It's, it, all the proceeds go to this, Mary T. Clinker out of, they're out of this general area, but most of the offices are in Lafayette. And, and they are looking for a facility, a more permanent facility for them and they are looking out for Carroll County for that. They've got a cultural disorder in Lafayette because they don't fit in the zoning criteria of normal city. So I put all their, and, and, and this is to, this, well, anyway, we're getting into a lot of other things, but I didn't want to need to, but. Anyway, the other businesses there, I've talked to the elevator on the other end, it's private from now on. The owners of that, that, that's fine. We, you know, when Don had his music festival, it should be smaller. But I, again, I don't know whether it'll take off or not. The whole town would be parked up with cars. Now, those were local people though and they didn't park on the fire department. But they did park on top of the scales, they did park all around the elevator, all that kind of stuff. So that day, overhaulers would close down operations even if it was in October, would just not be parking in ground that day. I've talked to a lot of people who would do the same thing, you know, will just not plan on not being open that day or moving drinks. So and the, and the post office will already be closed by that time, so there shouldn't be an issue with that. I'll, I'll load that through. And it's, it's my fault that I haven't gotten this worked out well enough ahead of time with the fire department. But I, I don't perceive any problem because they always have parks, you know, for the Hammond Bean supper, it's always, you know, my side all gets parked up and everything. And I have told them the whole time I've been there, now, this is my fourth season there. You know, whatever you gotta have on the move, it's fine with me. Park up the town, I think it'll be wonderful, you know, and it always has to. So I don't perceive any real problem. I just have to go over it as soon as what I should have. I thought I actually missed the commission meeting and I wouldn't be able to come and close roads. I thought, well, I'll run this asset.
I, I thought I should add that back in the days, we had an annual festival there, the Governor's collage for many years.